And when asked about the resignation letter, she said that she needed more time to think about it because she didn't have a definite date. July 1, she would give us a definite date. We met July 1, which was yesterday. Oh, today, I'm sorry. Today. That's awesome, please. And we asked her again when her final date was going to be. And she says she has not arrived at that decision. She had discussed it with someone else or some other person. And so therefore, she had no date. And but I was looking at the resignation letter, you know, and it kind of said that, you know, she felt it was like a kind of a hostile environment retaliation or res- you know, this type of thing. If that was the case, why do you want to extend it another thirty days? You know, I know personally if I had given a resignation that I felt that it was going to be a hostile environment, I would give my two weeks notice and I'm out of here. I'm not going to stand there and be harassed or intimidated if that was the case. So that's where I'm very confused in this resignation and now resenting the letter. You know, after our meeting today, I figured, okay, she's not wait till this meeting to determine which whether the city manager is here or not. Okay? And so that's where I'm very confused as to what she really wants.
Mayor, if I may, just following up on that, in that conversation, she also indicated that she's waiting to hear, I guess, from another job opportunity.
Correct.
And so at that point, if she hears from them tomorrow, she can come back tomorrow and say, okay, today's my last day. Or she can come back and say, oh, no, I didn't get the job, so I'm just here. And so there's no resolution to that at all. You know, we indicated that we needed a date. We need to plan. We need to know how much time do we have to work this out. To me, I think her position is a little bit more critical than any other position that we would fill. I need to know if I need to come to council at the next council meeting with the contract to bring in a contracted interim director of finance to help through this process or not. And I can't tell you that. So it's very hard to commit to being able to provide information, to provide any solid, accurate information because it's in the book.
So, you know, and her position is very critical to the run of the city because she helps with the budgets. Oh, she's like a surgeon. It's very critical. So what we ask is it definite even stay or not in the story? It's that simple. Because we got budget, we're running behind on the budget, we got to get this budget complete and passed by October. Yes, sir.
So I would ask a couple of questions. One is, Mayor, why are you in these administrative discussions between the city manager and the director of finance when Section 3.03, the mayor says, "So it presided meetings and councils recognize the city government for all ceremonial purposes. And by the government perverts the military law, but shall have no administrative duties." That is an out of order position from I believe for you to take.
And I'm not the one that was going to make the decision.
It doesn't matter. You are in an administrative meeting. That is not allowed. That's number one. Number two, I make the point, without prejudicing any action that the city would or would not take, we as council had been informed that there is a formal EEOC complaint filed against the city manager by the finance director. So it is not, and I do not want to get into that discussion at all, but it's very clear that there must be some responsibility, I think, on the part of the city manager to be able to work with the finance director as well. And I will say no more on that subject. Send it up, President.
And there's no need to bring up the issue of the yield complaint? Why do you have to bring up? I mean, why?
Because we're informed about it. And it relates, I'm sure it relates directly to why she is chosen and why she originally considers.
But it's two different things. One is an EEOC complaint, the other is a resignation. And to me, maybe this is a question for me to ponder on. Why are we, the city council, even considering a personnel issue? It seems to me like this is an issue between an employee and his or hers of the right. And if it should be brought to us, the city manager would be the one to bring it to us for consideration. But I don't see why we're even involved in that type of a, this type of a situation. Am I wrong? Am I right? May I?
Well, yes, the city manager has all the administrative authority under the charter. You know, the department heads, the hiring and firing of department heads are done at the advice and consent of the city councils. So if there were a termination or recruitment and hiring of a new department head, the new city manager must consult with the city council. Anything short of that is really the city manager's business with the employees.
And their resignation?
I'm sorry?
But a resignation?
Well, not really. I mean, the way the charter talks about the removal of a department head and that removal typically means termination. So otherwise, it's not for the council to give advice and consent. So if there were a termination or hiring of a new department head, the city managers require to consult with the council. Any other decisions are administrative and in the realm of the city manager's authority.
So you would say this motion would be in order then?
Well, I don't recall the exact motion that was made. But if it does not involve a termination, then it would not be a council decision or council input on that decision.
So the purpose of the motion was for council to take the position they do not consider this resignation letter to any longer be active. Therefore, it's not a resignation?
Well, I really believe that resignations are between the city manager and the employee. Terminations, however, do have to come to the council for your advice and consent.
So we have a situation, again, I'm going to bring up the complaint that was filed by the employee where, and I do not know the terms and details when we can file it because I have not seen access to it. The password has been changed. But the employees expressed some concern as she did in the letter to all of council that she wants to continue. And in the case of prior cases where people have said, I want to submit my letter of resignation, Act 201, we thought out about that months before it occurred, and he just continued on it and eventually said, got to December, time to retire. And he was done. So my sense is this all ties in together. And this particular employee, as we know, has a stellar record, but certainly some issues with the city manager and the city manager with her. So I am not, I want to make sure we can retain this employee.
I think that since Jessica got a chance to talk with the mayor, I think we should have Megan also get that chance to talk. That would only be fair. Well, it would be fair if there was justice in politics, but apparently there's not. I would argue at this point, as Mick has stated, resignations are not the same as terminations. Negotiating her end date then would be between her and myself. If we're looking at this because we're taking it as a sensitive issue because she filed an EEOC complaint, it's not the only one. Other employees have filed and they have not come to council. Emails have been sent to council addressing these concerns from other employees, and council has not taken any action on those complaints either. I think you do a disservice to the organization, the employees as a whole. If you separate one and treat it differently than you will treat the others. And I think that goes to part of the problem, as I said before, the dysfunction that goes on here is, and the toxicity that it creates when council oversteps and intervenes in ways which is prejudicial from one employee over another.
Well, I'd agree with that, which is why I raised the question, why is the mayor involved directly in city business?
He's in as my witness.
Ah, so certainly Megan probably needs a witness as well, since you-
And she's had one.
Since you killed the employee grievance policy.
She has had one.
And was that a witness of her choosing?
Yeah.
So maybe we can hear that from Megan.
I think this is a form for it.
If I could bring up a question, two questions. One, when you got the letter from Megan or the email, I'm assuming you took action to talk to her and try to at least negotiate or mediate on a leave date?
Well, it was an odd resignation. It wasn't hand delivered to me. It was sent via email in which everyone was copied on it, including other employees who were then later included in her letter of resignation. I had not opened my email. We had a meeting at one o'clock in the afternoon, I believe, that was the Wednesday. Went through an hour long meeting. She never mentioned anything like, she's like, hey, I'm going to be here, or I'm not going to be here, so don't count me in. Went back later on after five o'clock, opened my email, saw it, and attempted to address it with her. Probably was the, ended up being the Monday after because just the way timing went and people being in and out. At that time, she chose to have Abel come in and be a witness with her to negotiate that date. Said, you've indicated in here, you have given a specific date. You indicated in here that you want to be in good standing, so our policy says two weeks. However, she, it was scheduled to be on vacation this week, and then we had a holiday. I said, you know, what are you considering your last day? Threw back and forth, had decided it would be the 28th of June. And then later on, she said, oh, I have a doctor's appointment on the 28th of June, so the 27th would be it. So then she sent the email out that the 27th would be her last day.
And she agreed? Got a question for her.
I would say not really agreed, but she did not oppose it.
So the 26th of June, she wrote that it says, "I understand that the city manager offered my last day to me this week. Four days of transition is going on. I will continue to serve the community as a minimum thirty days to the end of my final date." That was on the 26th of June.
And when I saw that, I got a copy of the same email, I thought, it came to mind, if I read on that day, that the way you read. Got a question for Mick.
Yes, sir.
We know the issue regarding the grievance procedure situation, that it was left out of the employee handbook. And who's to blame? A lot of it goes around because we were the ones that basically approved the handbook, we left the grievance procedure in it. But that doesn't mean that wasn't a grievance procedure in place because there is a policy of grievance procedure that was approved in 2014, I believe. I don't have a copy with me. But until we approve the new one and put it in the handbook, it always still stands. It might roll on.
Well, I think when you approved the new employee manual, that replaced the prior previous manual. So the grievance procedure that was in that manual was no longer in effect at that time. So the new manual didn't have one, I don't believe. And that's why you've worked on putting a new one together to add to your employee manual. So I think the council's action, when you went through the workshops and eventually you adopted the new employee manual, actually did away with the prior grievance procedure.
Did provide additional clarification, adding the council's representative on that grievance rule. I raised the question specifically because I thought it was a separate resolution that would not have been superseded by the employee handbook. And I was told by the city manager, grievance policies are not allowed for the city. And that's why I voted no. Okay, you can argue that the powers come home.
That's how I, how you understood it. That's how I said.
So what did you say?
We're not a civil service city. We're not a civil service commission city. So having a grievance committee is not moral. Not that it's not allowed, you're just not a civil service commission city. Usually you see grievance committees of that type in cities that have civil service commissions.
So if that was your rationale, as to why I went?
Well, ultimately-
Because it clearly did not show up in the employee handbook.
Ultimately, so when you read the employee handbook, it doesn't say grievance, it says complaint. And the complaint procedure remains. If you have a complaint, you are to talk to your supervisor. If your supervisor, if you don't feel your supervisor resolves it, you're supposed to go to the next manager, to the city manager. It's a chain of command.
And when it gets to the city manager, it says, the buck stops you.
Where does it, where do you complain to?
It says, because you are employee reporting to the city council, current policy and what says, the buck stops with you. And that was not where we were before, which is the whole basis behind adding a grievance policy. The council refers to, and what we just approved was, refers to the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or the judge. And that was the initial rule. And in this case, you are Megan's supervisor.
So having said that, and what Mick said, that ultimately, city manager is responsible for Megan, as far as his resignation letter is concerned, and not the council to choose.
So if Megan chooses not to accept the date from the city manager, then that would be a termination that we, the council, would have to regret.
Right, it hasn't happened.
So she's still here, there's no date set. And I have not talked to Megan, so I don't know if she's agreed. Have you and Megan agreed to a date?
She actually agreed? No. She said, I will let you know when I know. I will let you know when I'm ready. We asked, you know, that's not sufficient, it's not acceptable. She indicated she was waiting to hear from another job offer. And of course, my first question is, what if she doesn't get it? Does this mean we're going to be in this limbo forever? And I think at some point, whether she gives us a date or I determine the date to be the thirty days or two weeks, that's just part of her resignation. It's not termination.
So if you, so Mick, if Jessica determines the date and Megan does not agree, is that termination?
Well, it depends on whether she's withdrawn her resignation. If it's just based on the resignation, no. It's just the negotiation of the exit date. If there's a, if the resignation had been withdrawn, then the city manager would be terminating the employee. But if it's, I think it's between the city manager and the employee to determine the exit date based on a resignation.
Yep, so if Megan chooses to withdraw the resignation, then the only choice the city manager would have would be to terminate her.
Well, you know, that's where it gets a little bit iffy about, if the first resignation's already accepted, that's effective, you know? How late can you withdraw a resignation? You'd have to really look at the whole thing to see how that worked. But if the city manager already accepted the resignation and are just talking about the date, then that's not really a termination.
Okay, so the date will be whatever that Megan and the city manager agree with, which could be a year from now.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. And if the city manager and employee disagree, where does that rest?
Well, the city manager's determination as the administrative head of the city would apply then.
Of which the employee-
Based on, you know, the resignation is being effectuated, the date that, it's a little like any other boss situation, the date that you leave. You know, when I have an employee present, I make sure they're gone the same day, whether they give two days' notice or not. So it's a matter of how it's accepted and what the negotiation is between the city manager and employee. The charter provision really only applies to removal of a department head. So that connotes a termination instead of effectuating a resignation.
So city manager is, what did you document to say that you accepted the resignation?
The, basically the conversation with her and determining what her final date would be and the result being the 27th, because she sent that other note. And we did sit down and talk with her again. She was going to give us a date as of yesterday. We weren't able to make a meeting yesterday with her, so that was done today. And I guess I can meet with her again tomorrow and determine what that final date will be.
So what do we call the motion?
It's not like they have a motion stand to take a vote, even though it won't count. What's this again? So I made a motion. Is that legal? Mick?
Well, you can take any motion as long as the council wishes to establish a policy. I suppose in this case, it would be providing some advice to the city manager would be the effect of any motion you go on.
So the motion should be readdressed then, yes?
Well, the motion is, the city manager will do what she's going to do with it.
Any more discussion?
So your motion was to not accept her resignation?
That is correct. That's a not so, yes.
But it's still up to the city manager to understand that.
Right, I understand.
I want to make that clear for the motion. Okay.
Let's go to the motion again. Just a second.
So the motion is that city council not accept the resignation as, and consider that a resignation has not been provided.
You need a second. You can make that motion. But if, but you can make the motion. But does, we can accept with, ultimately, it's her choice.
Ultimately, she's going to make that decision.
So regardless of what the vote is, ultimately, it's up.
Right. Okay. All righty, motion been made. Second amendment discussion complete. Who's in favor of accepting the motion? Raise your right hand. Oppose, black side. Motion carries. Order one.
Okay.
He voted yes?
I'm sorry, correction. Then it's fine. I don't have eyes, I don't have visual vision. Okay, let's go to item B.
Item B, we've had considerable discussion about the performance review and the performance improvement plan associated with the city manager. And at the last executive session, Mayor, it was reported that the city manager refuses to sign the performance improvement plan that council drafted. And which includes a number of areas of concern. That include lack of team building and communication skills, issues with leadership qualities, lack awareness on the city issues, lack and lack of sufficient information to council my decisions, and not meeting a number of city commitments, requirements, and actions. We had a number of observations that we made associated with that. We built a nine-point plan as council that we spent consulting with on in executive session that ranges anywhere from addressing the issues of employer retention to reporting out at every regular city council meeting, including key issues, and discuss that we're doing the employee handbook update. We have it done by the first of October. We address leadership training, provide training to the directors and supervisors, and that there will be a stop-start continuing process. City manager, respectfully to council, came back and said that she was not willing to sign the performance improvement plan because she believed on advice and counsel that it would alter her contract that we have with the city, even though in the performance improvement plan, we stated we would not alter the performance contract. In my opinion, we as council need to take a position relative to the performance improvement plan, even though the dates that we originally drafted go back to the 21st of May, we're now in July. So I would propose that city council approve the performance improvement plan for the city manager, that we, and that date be reflected as of July 2nd, 2019. And all of the dates in item four, which are about reviewing improvement goals and plans in the second meeting of each city council meeting, be amended to reflect starting August and go through December of 2019. So that is the motion.
I'll second.
But how you second it? Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
This item reads, "Discuss, consider, and take appropriate actions regarding the personnel review and discuss the annual performance assessment and evaluation of the city manager." This item does not say anything about approving or implementing a performance improvement plan. I have still not seen an evaluation. I know that evaluations were sent out to council members in January. The results of those evaluations have not been shared with me. As I indicated in my letter to you and the council, I believe that the items in this and the expectations were set forth in a retaliatory manner and as punishment rather than as a performance improvement tool. There are many items in that, in those goals and expectations that are organizational goals, not individual goals. I cannot help when someone retires. I cannot help when someone passes away. I cannot help when someone leaves their employment with the city of Alpine because they got a better offer or because their spouse got a better offer in another city. And so that is something that, if held to, I don't feel is justified, but I feel it is retaliatory in that it goes back to the information that was provided to me by the previous HR coordinator, which then again started this misinformation that was being delivered by me because of the information I was being provided. As far as this, again, my response is in not signing it was because of the newspaper article that came out in the Big Ben Gazette, actually two articles, in which there were comments made by Mr. Stevens and Mrs. Scobetto and by the former HR coordinator, which I believe to be misleading and misguided. And the city had agreed, in fact, in February, to hire a consultant. The results or report from that consultant has not been shared with me either, nor have they been shared with anyone else, to my knowledge. And until that information is forthcoming, I'm not comfortable signing the PIP and saying that, yes, these are areas of my performance that need to be improved. And that was my rationale. I believe the letter goes on a little bit longer than that, into more detail. But performance improvement, performance improvement plans are supposed to be tools to help employees improve their performance, not to be retaliatory or not to be used as punishment. There were, the format of that was changed from the format that had been approved by council. Sections were left out, sections were amended. And again, even though if I sign that performance improvement plan, even though it says it does not alter my contract, it will alter the results of any future evaluations that my contract is subject to.
And you did not receive your evaluation back in January. Is that correct? So therefore, if I'm wrong, you're saying I wouldn't give him my question, but now I'm being given the performance improvement plan when I was not in battle with it back then?
It's not based on evaluation. It's not based on evaluation.
So you're going for no evaluation till PIP?
Right.
So may I remind council of the actions we all took together? We delayed during a performance evaluation on the city manager until the 19th of February in order to allow Councilman Fitzgerald to be present because he had done all out ill. We all agreed to that. On the 19th of February, we sat down together as council and each had the forms that they had filled out regarding the performance assessment and appraisal of the city manager. You all recall that meeting, except for me, as you are here. Okay? Because as a result of that discussion, we said there are significant items where that we as the council need to go spend time to review and better understand because they had been raised. It was as a result of that, we, together as council, went and hired an independent city manager consultant by the name of Ron Hollyfield of SGR Resources. Uh, SGR, which is Strategic Government Resources. Ron Hollyfield came in and interviewed all of council, interviewed the city manager, interviewed all of the city managers' direct reports. As you recall, we on council agreed that we would not get a written report from Mr. Hollyfield. That was a part of his contract that we all agreed to. He then came in and gave us a verbal report and gave us...it's my recollection that I would invite the rest of the council to talk about it. There were three major...actually, two findings and a question that were raised. And I'm prepared to talk about those items unless someone objects to that.
Please do.
Okay. The first item was that there is a significant amount of disagreement amongst this group as city council relative to the performance of the city manager. The second item that was raised is there is one department head that was specifically noted that requires some action because, in his view, in his estimate, in his short view, there are some challenges there. There was a question asked, and that question was, "Do you believe that the city manager is capable of being successful and have the competencies necessary to go forward leading the city?" And his answer was, "No, I do not believe she has the competency to be a successful city manager." Those are the major items that came out. As a result of that discussion, we then spent a number of times in executive session to go, and we all agreed to go develop a performance improvement. And the performance improvement plan is what we initially came to agree on on the 21st as the document that we have all seen multiple times. It was following that session that we agreed to make some minor tweaks at a meeting in early June. And the mayor was to take that and review with the city manager. And at that time, she came back and responded as she did this evening, that says, "No, I believe it's punitive. It's not appropriate, and I've never received a performance appraisal plan." My view is, we council have a choice to make, and there's no question we are dysfunctional in terms of our understanding about where we believe this city is. We've talked about employer retention issues. I would point out that the numbers the city manager gave us, there are 94 employees, of which 45% of those employees have been here, or 42, to be specific, have been here 18 months or less. And 21 of them have been here six months or less, and there are 11 open positions. That's the data from the city manager. She provided us to us on June 13th, which is twice the national average. We've talked about lack of roads. We've talked about surprises on, "Oh, I wasn't aware that budget billing went away." And we talked about too many things that we learned of after the fact. So while we can certainly bow to the city manager that says she's never received a performance approval...or a performance appraisal plan, my sense is, we spent considerable time documenting our perspectives because we all agreed to do a performance approval plan. That's all we've been trying to get on the table, as there's opportunities for improvement. PIPs, by their very nature, are designed to focus on areas that could use improvement. It is not intended to be punitive. Clearly, the city manager believes it's punitive, but that was not the intent. And I don't care what we say, until the cows come home, she's never gonna believe that. So that's why I wanted a force on the table. It's time to get this plan on the table. And whether it takes the format of what's in our documents or not, it actually did come out of the documents, as you also recall. We went through that, and we removed some elements because it didn't seem to be appropriate. We would've had to put more data in there, and we agreed not to go do that. So I would offer that as a little bit different perspective about where we've been trying to drive with the performance improvement plan, about getting a city manager whose response to the needs of the city and the citizens and demonstrates capability supports the council.
Okay. And Mr. Hollyfield's assessment, he said that she...he felt she could be over her head.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Secondly, he says there was a department head that he talked to, and like a police chief that was under his...those longest subordinates in the boroughs, he fired that police chief on the spot.
He did, yeah.
Right. And he said that, but he alluded to a certain employee.
Yes.
Okay. You know, that seems to have been thrown by the wayside. He also said...
I bet that was one of the three items I mentioned.
Yeah, right, but I'm just clarifying.
Right off.
But he also said that even if the city manager was terminated, that element of not of employees was still gonna be there, and that would continue under a new city manager. Correct?
He did. And frankly, we've had a city manager who was here before, who was very successful with the employee, so we're here. And so the major thing that's occurred is a change in the city manager. And therein lies the issue, we're missing the base somewhere.
And, you know, and, yeah, you could say that. I also look at it, whenever there's a new city manager or a change, there's resistance.
Of course.
And there's always resistance. As city council, we were...we...you invited the disgruntled employees to come before council. Okay? Only two actually testified the rest that they were intimidated by council.
They were intimidated by council.
And why is that?
They were intimidated specifically by council because the ones they had talked to, their comment was...all they said was, "I need to go talk to my supervisor about these issues." And the challenge was, their supervisor is the issue. And so that's why the rest said, "I'm not gonna do it." And mayor, if I may, as we pointed out, on some of the items that I raised in the executive council, in order to maintain employee anonymity, of the 18 employees that came forward, I don't mention names, as I recall, there's some statements made by members of this group that says, "I know that's not be true. They just lie. Employees lie, they're not trusted." And so they took that as, "Why should I go to a council who says they openly want to hear things, and yet they say, 'All we do is lie.'" And one of those examples, she's resigned. She was the former HR coordinator. She wanted, and she put things on the table, she says, "Council doesn't support me and says, 'I lie.' Why should I go see them?" She sought for a mentor. So they struggle with us because if we say, whatever they say is a lie, there's no truth, why should they stay and see them?
But I think that Mr. Hollyfield would kinda prove that point, that some of them were upfront in what the allegations they made.
You say they were not upfront?
Yes, 'cause he had a quizzum and quizzum till they started.
They did not talk to all the employees.
No, he didn't. I didn't say that. I did not say that. But once he did talk to them, he said he had a, like, bullet teeth to get answers. And then when you...
We don't know. We didn't go name by name.
But we didn't. No, we didn't.
We didn't, so we don't know, mayor.
I don't. Okay, I don't know who it was.
We don't.
But then when we...you know, when you came in here and I put the Bible on there that says, "You all need to swear on the Bible to tell the truth," because nothing is gonna keep you from telling the truth if you just walk up to anybody and make allegations. But that's why a court has a Bible you gotta swear to to tell the truth. And so I don't know if that also intimidated or what. Okay, I just wanted that for clarification because that's what I took out of it. Now, we wanna hear the whole truth, and let's swear on the Bible.
You'd like to interject and make a couple of comments? One, I...it was surprising when the special counsel, Ron Pellicue?
Hollyfield.
Hollyfield. Gave his report to us. He basically said that the major problem within the city of Alpine right now are basically three things. Insubordination, high levels of insubordination. Basically saying that employees do not want to adhere to change, a change of the city council, the city manager has come in to implement policy that we approved is basically the end. Second, he also said that gross disrespect for policy, basic coordination and separation. And then basically, the third thing he said, and I remember this very clearly, he says, "You have people in this organization that should be in those positions." And I won't...
Yeah, that's fine.
But that, I understood very, very carefully. He did bring up this idea of that maybe the city manager was in a situation where he thought, he didn't say it was, it's a good idea, it's a bad idea, but it might be over yet. Well, I took to mind to ask the city manager what questions that the special counsel asked of you, and what did he ask of you, I guess?
Um, he asked me if the mayor and I were drinking buddies. He asked me if I ever...if I recall ever touching anyone inappropriately, and what I knew about budget billing. My answers, of course, were, "I have had drinks with the mayor twice outside of the work environment." One was, I was invited by a third party. The mayor happened to be there, so we were in the same building at the same time. The other time was...was actually at a TML function. And then upon reflection, there was the third time in which the Legion was hosting a fundraiser for the police department and the Ministry of Alliance. The mayor was outside, and I happened to just go get him a beer, and then my husband and I left. I don't know where the touching inappropriately comes from. I don't recall touching anyone ever inappropriately at the water department. And as far as the budget billing, I explained to him, we had discussions back and forth about budget billing, the issues, and whether it was or wasn't, what we could or couldn't do, because there weren't any...there weren't...we did not have an ordinance for budget billing for water. I explained to him, I even have an email from the director of finance that says, concurring that only the water would be affected. Mick and I had conversations. We were working on a process to bring an ordinance before council. We actually had one instance where we asked council about, "How do you wanna handle this? Do you want all of these discrepancies to come to you? Do you want them to be handled? Do you wanna set a time limit?" Council never...never got back on that point, and so the budget billing ordinance just got pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. Those were the three questions.
So based upon those three questions, he assessed that you were way over ahead in the position that you had.
Yes. It doesn't... I have no doubt that I can do great things for this city. I have no doubt that I can create a path for this city to move forward. Right now, it seems overwhelming. The streets are crumbling. People want paved streets, but when they go flush their toilet and turn their water on, tell me what's more important? That pothole on the street or being able to have a drink and water? There are other priorities in this city that need to be addressed. Mentioned one a couple months ago about the landfill. You own the landfill. You're responsible for that landfill. Your permit has a limit on it. You are just under that permit on a... That issue is another one that has been worked. I have no doubt I can do good things here. I have no doubt that we can create a vision and move this town forward while still maintaining the character of this community with respect for everyone in this community, be equitable and consistent in applying policies moving forward. But it does take trust. If I don't have trust in the people that are tasked to give me information and to provide action for me, it makes it very challenging. It makes it very challenging. And it's true. I come from an area, most cities, cities smaller than Alpine, that took the time to say, "Hey, let's come up with a strategic plan for our city. Where do we wanna be in five years as a city?" And then said, "Here's the plan. Implement it." This city doesn't have plans. Your last comprehensive plan was done in 1961. We just updated your master parks plan. That's gonna be a fantastic tool moving forward for recreation, but it still doesn't address what happens when people turn on water and there's no water, or they flush the toilet and it doesn't go anywhere. Is the city gonna continue to budget $40,000 a year just to pay fines to TCEQ, or do you wanna fix the problem? I know that I have the ability to work you into that. I did it in Clinton. I did it in Benton. I know the funding agencies have a lot of confidence in the information that I put together and the plans that I put together for them. As it was noted when you hired me, Benton not only got $24 million once, they got it twice, after a dysfunctional council refused to accept the first $24 million. So that can be done here. The potential of this town to move forward is amazing. I see it. I see it every day. It takes patience. It takes collaboration, but it also takes the support of this council, sharing the same vision, moving forward. I'm human. I'm only one person. I have department heads, and I have employees. And if I can't hold them accountable, then we're right back where we started from. And this council is in the same position in making this decision.
And just one other comment, if I may, in respect to the PIP. I have to admit, we started off the process actually quite nice, quite organized, quite anybody involved, I saw in a different direction. And when we sent the information to Mick for his review, compa...compa...and to compile, it came back to us, I saw this, and I said, "Whoa, this doesn't look like what I thought it was going to be." So I came up with my own. I ran this through a PIP. I sent it to Mick, and I...apparently, he sent it back to all of you?
He did.
He sent it to...okay. And we never even discussed that during the final, I guess, deliberation of what the PIP should put out. It was not my version.
We all had a chance to look at it.
Yes.
We in council had a discussion, extended session, and agreed to this one.
But you were the only one that didn't sign it.
You were the only one that did not sign it, of all.
Yes, and I won't sign it. Recently, and I...I already...I agree to an extent with the city manager that the PIP that you guys voted on is not a plan to progress. It's a plan to fail. And I kinda suspect because of all of the history behind it.
But you were also part of the...
Yeah. I know. I know. But I...when I saw the...when I saw the end product, it's not a plan to progress. It's not.
So I'm gonna...I'm gonna call for the question. Okay? Motion been made. Second and discussion held. And all who's in favor of those motions, raise your right hand.
What exactly is the motion?
Okay, come back with your motion.
So the motion is to present... So the motion is to present the PIP that we all saw dated May 21st, 2019, to update it to reflect today's date, which is July 2nd. That would be on page number one. And on page number three, where it says follow-up dates, talks about scheduled dates to come back to city council, that we change those dates to reflect the second council meeting each month starting August 20th and proceed five months from now. That is the motion.
Okay. All, there was a motion that you were. All opposed, black side, opposed, motion fails.
No, it does not. You do not vote on this, Mayor.
All on hers?
You do not.
Mick, then the motion fails, then it's a tie.
No, you do not.
It's not a tie.
Oh, two to two, sorry. Three to two. My mic just left. Three to two. I'm sorry.
Long night.
Okay. So.
See, Mayor.
Now, I would make, prior to making this motion, since we've already extended past nine, that the maker's.
It's, we're, we now have to get off.
You're on the floor. Sorry.
No worries. We're in a regular session.
I know, I make the motion.
Mm-hmm.
It will extend the regular city council meeting beyond 9:00 PM so we can clear our business.
And I'll second that.
Second.
Okay. All's in favor, second. Anybody? Not all's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, black side.
Just for the audience, our meetings are legally supposed to finish at 9:00 PM unless we extend them. Uh, we have a choice to extend it, to continue our business, or have the meeting postponed or stop the meeting and continue it the next day at the same time. We just chose to extend the official stuff. So, the last act, uh, is all about, in the improvement action relative to the employment contract of the city manager, Jessica Garza, including possible resumé, adjustment duties, discipline, and dismissal. Uh, as you recall, at a prior city council meeting, this vote, uh, this motion was put to a test and it failed, uh, according to the city attorney, uh, according to, although there's differences between the current one we have and previous city attorneys, uh, the current city attorney believes and has stated that it requires, that includes the vote of the, uh, mayor in this discussion, it is not just the council. Even though before, in this town, the precedent was set that it only takes the council, which is a 3-2 vote, to dismiss the city manager. All that is background, recognizing that, uh, in, uh, that the, uh, the only way that council has to be able to take action relative to the city manager is through performance appraisal, uh, and we just signed the PIP. However, should the, uh, council not approve this next motion, that performance improvement plan will become basically useless because the council have no teeth for the implementation. So, that is background. Uh, I move that the city council take action to terminate the contract of the city manager, consistent with the contractor's.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made, second, discussion.
Good.
So, you're saying, you're, you're eliminating the contract so you can give her the.
No, no, I'm saying is, the reality is, is we've passed the performance improvement plan. But should the city council, uh, you know, my view is, I'd love to see the PIP go forward, okay? But I know that thus far, the city manager, she said she would refuse to sign it. Maybe I should ask the question, are you going to sign the performance improvement plan or not?
Not as written.
Okay, so she's already said that despite the majority of council, she will not sign the performance approval.
As written.
As written, okay? Uh, and since we've already seen her extensive comments relative to that, there's not much of the performance improvement plan, she will agree to it. Uh, so in my view, city council does not have much choice other than to make the motion for termination because otherwise, she will refuse to sign the PIP as we just agreed to, and therefore she will not take action relative to the performance improvement plan. That's where we're stuck. It's a moot move. I wish her answer had been, yes, I will sign the performance improvement plan, then there's no need for the motion.
A question, Mick?
Yes, sir.
Uh, in order for this motion to go through, does it mean that the entire city council had to have approved the PIP?
Uh, no.
Approved?
No. That, that just requires a majority of the council to approve that. That's just a regular agenda. The termination of the city manager on the charter requires a resignation adopted by four council members, four voting in for the council.
Is it legal then, but the motion is, the motion is.
The PIP does not. The PIP is, uh, is the majority of the council.
So that's why I say we're stuck and, as you recall, in executive session, we got ourselves stuck in this position. We have agreed that we promote a PIP, but since the city manager says, I'm not willing to sign the PIP as written, and I believe, although we've not had the discussion in her letter to us, there are a whole number of letters that she does not believe to read. Uh, she's openly stated she wants a performance assessment, uh, she does not consider the performance improvement plan a part of that. My concern is, council is in a difficult position. We've heard in passionate plea about the city manager believes she can go off and do. Fortunately, my concern is, over the last 18 months, uh, we've not had contracts signed as required, and we don't have a budget, we don't have leadership, we don't have employees' leave, we have a lack of awareness about a number of items. Uh, we're going to get surprised, and so we're a situation where I want to force the question again. And frankly, uh, I find it difficult to believe that this council will approve the motion as presented, but I want to put on the table because I want to hear this on the form of citizens, and let them say what we understand.
Uh, Mick?
Yes, sir.
I have another question.
Okay.
The PIP, apparently that it had been put in place, does that affect, affect at all, does that overtake the contract of the city manager?
No. It doesn't affect the contract terms at all.
Why are we in the process to decide that we should terminate it because you didn't sign the PIP?
Well, it's a separate issue. I mean, this is brought forward as a separate matter, we have to. It all, I think it, it just stands on its own.
The last thing out behind you is, the city manager said, I will run a Bible PIP.
By saying that, it's saying like, it becomes a contract.
No, no, it's a procedure. And we've already voted on it, and we include it in there because not supersede the contract.
May I, May?
So, yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I'd just like to go back, um, in February, and council was doing my evaluation, and there was not an evaluation. Um, however, um, I do know, well, I have seen one evaluation from a council member. Um, but at the end of that meeting, it was agreed that the council would bring in an HR consultant, and when that HR consultant had provided their findings, then council would complete the evaluation. So my question is, has council completed the evaluation?
No.
Straight to the PIP.
And that was, that was an action item that was, that was voted on. Um, one of the other issues was, as I stated then, city manager contracts, and Mick, you can jump in if I'm wrong, city manager contracts are written in such a way that if, at a point, the city manager and the council, um, do not share the same vision or do not agree on the direct path, the city council and the city manager would agree then, um, amicably to terminate the contract, um, with the preference for the severance. That is why the severance provision is provided, is that correct?
That appears in most city manager contracts, I believe it's in your contract. It's kind of an agreed separation.
And at that time, it was, that was not agreed to because council wanted to do the consultant and, and then do the evaluation after the consultant was done. So, you're, I think, the reason council is in this dilemma is because it has followed a path that it has not wanted to stick to, um, going back to, you know, not agreeing on what the, what the shared vision is for the city, and not agreeing on how you're going to achieve that vision. Now, if, if, if council believes that I'm not the right person, and council believes that the next person is going to have better luck with the same challenges that I had, then that's fine.
Right, yes.
But I believe that the terms of my contract then should be honored.
There's not a lot of talk about.
I, I would rather, I would rather stay here, as I said before, I believe, I, I can do this. I don't, I don't think that the consultant, based on the three questions I was asked, can determine that I'm over my head.
You know, I'm going to speak for the city manager. She does have a vision for the city, even though a lot of folks don't agree with it. She can move the city forward. She has enough cities I've worked alongside her and I've listened to other, uh, mayors and, uh, department heads when we go to female conference. We speak highly of her because of the job she has done there. Now, I know there's changes, uh, that people will always agree on, we're going to, we could sit here and deliberate all night long on it, but the bottom line is, we need to move this town forward. And I think we, she has a vision, I think us as city council have a responsibility to keep that vision going. I mean, this little town, uh, has kind of laid here, dorn a little, you know, for a while, and now we have a chance to move on to greater things. Yes, there's a street issue. It's been there for 40 years, you know? Uh, it's like you said, you want water, you want your toilet flushed, or you want your street repaired, which is, which is a choice you're going to make. Okay? That's the decision she's having to, to deal with right now. Yes, she's having issues with department heads, but you know what? She's a city manager. She should take action on the department heads that do not want to work with her and move this city forward. I think that city council will do this city a great injustice, but not permitting her to stay and fulfill her dream of moving the city forward. So with that, I'm going to call for the question.
So before you, Mayor.
Can I make one more, one comment?
Yes, sir.
And then just to confirm the comments made by the Honorable Mayor, I would like to say that, uh, in my opinion, Jessica Garza is a leader with a vision, and one important thing about leaders is that their goal is to inform other leaders. And if there are people out there that don't want to follow that lead, you're not going to get any progress. The city will not progress, will not advance forward. Yeah, it's enough. Please just take.
So, sir. We've heard a lot about vision, haven't seen one. We've seen lack of performance, haven't seen one. So, you know, it'd be nice to see this vision that we're all talking about.
Well, we, we.
Well, I'll, I'll let it dash. Okay? Written down, documented, in a way that makes sense. In my mind, one of the important things I was looking for was to seeing a budget for this fiscal year coming up. Because frankly, one of my concerns that I see is, given all the things on the table, we have more requirements and issues to go work than we've got money for. And I'm very concerned about that, that's why I was looking to see particularly the capital improvement plan, because we've not seen the grants that were talked about, as was already admitted, we missed a grant before, and so I'm still struggling with seeing it. I'd like to believe, I'd like to believe. My worry is, I haven't seen it, and with the number of people who have left the city for whatever reason it may be, okay? Uh, but we don't have people in place to get the job done that we need right now, and as a result, we are suffering mildly. And so, we need to see when a budget comes up. I, I'm hoping to see a budget tonight, but I haven't seen one yet. It's not, it's not the city manager's fault, it's someone else's fault.
You mean, you can comment on this action, right? Yes, ma'am.
Can I talk from here? Why, why can't you all, this big thing, the performance, uh, is it called?
Performance approval.
Yes, why can't you all do that over again and see if you can come to an agreement on it, to where maybe she will sign?
Yeah, we're certainly.
Start working together!
We, we worked on it together for a long time. We, we got, we got to the point where we're just. We're tired of it.
We only worked on it one time, I think we said that.
We worked on it one time?
Because, I remember we sat in there.
One, one at a time. Wait, you guys? Okay. Okay, just, just like, we got a discussion here soon as.
So we didn't, so we didn't only work on it one time.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, can I just say that?
Can, you can, you can come to the podium, please.
That working with the council members, along with the city manager, um, she's very easy to work with, um, we've gotten so much done, um, with the county and stuff, so I enjoy working alongside all of y'all and alongside her, um, it's been pretty great, so I haven't had a problem, and we've been getting a lot of things done, so I just wanted to say that.
For you. You didn't.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, Stephanie Almore, sorry.
EMC.
EMC. So, working with everybody here, it's been great, and I just wanted to say that.
Yes, ma'am.
Oscar Cobos and Mayor, Council and Management here, it's, uh, there's a lot of potential in this community, and personally, I have felt, and tonight we have a lot of people here because, not because everything's really cool, and there's a big concern. And one thing I've seen in the agenda, and I've stressed even the what if I perspective, and I'll stress it again, is, uh, mayor and, um, city manager for the past nine months, uh, mayor's report, manager's report, none. And personally, I'm just coming to the point to say, you know, we, there's room for improvement for all of us, but if there's no, nobody willing to step out for this city, here we worked 36 hours without water at the heights, and then it was degraded to, no, it was your fault. And, uh, so all these issues are there. I know there's good in everybody, but tonight is a big concern for a lot of us, and, uh, I think it's, yes, I had my issues with the previous city manager that we were more concerned with, but today, coming down to today, if we don't work this out, and all this infighting that teams to go out, it's not good, so we need to reach a decision that's good for the community. We can have all these events around town and with all the wine, cheese, and crackers we want to put together, that's fine and dandy, but if we continue to put the issues and information and discussion, and now allow us to speak, whoever does the agenda, there's no transparency in that. Thank you.
Just, uh, Ms. Cobos, that's where you have to get all your council members to get a little agenda, and you, you can speak anytime you want during that period of time. We're not trying to hide any, you know, from anybody who's speaking. It's just there is a procedure.
So Oscar and I talk a lot. Many of the items that show up, we've talked about, and that's why they're an information discussion. I can easily put them on action items so that Oscar can.
If he wants to talk, I mean, it's, it's.
I'll add them to action items, we're only allowed 10 action items.
Right, but it's up to the constituents if they want to come and speak. We don't want to block anybody from, from speaking at any meeting.
Hey, we.
You know, we work for you guys.
Table.
So I don't have a problem with that.
I move all my items back to you.
That's fine, you know, that's your project. Yes, sir.
Dave Lambrix, not me, okay, what if I?
You got it.
I've sat here and listened to all this BS all night tonight, and as a former federal union representative and executive leader in federal government, I find all this bunch of hooligans. Having a PIP before an evaluation is unheard of. After an evaluation, if it ain't doing what it's supposed to be doing, it's supposed to be consulting sessions before the PIP. to be content success before the PIP. I think you are out of order, my opinion, from my professional experience, to do a PIP without having an evaluation.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question. So, on the motion. Let you repeat it one more time so everybody understands.
Sure, the motion is to terminate the employment of the city manager, Jessica Garza, consistent with the contract, which means she would get the six-month severance because we are taking the action.
So everybody understands that. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those oppose?
Can?
Mayor does approve.
I get to vote.
Yes, it does.
It does.
Yes.
Get to vote. The motion is...
Why does that change?
It's not, it's, it's a tie.
The motion fails.
It fails, motion fails, so... Four, four votes.
It fails.
Mr. Mayor, Louie, you're...
Not available.
He told you that it had changed. You all in here? That's why we all have to be here.